All right, I'd like to call the meeting order. Thank you all for joining us today. In the interest of improved productivity and efficiency in town, we have a new improved and efficient American flag for our pledge.
Can everyone in the back please say "Amen"?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being in its heart. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. So first item up is to consider an act upon the minutes of regular meeting September 5th, 2012. May I have a motion to accept? A second?
Second.
I have one. I have a discussion for a head discussion this week.
Thank you, John. Can I keep your microphones removed?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Petro. I just wanted to note on page seven, very last page, last page, last paragraph. It's the second sentence. It says, "Selecting Kylie made a motion that the Board of Selectmen look at the agreement." And I believe that should we review and vote on the agreement versus just look at the agreement.
Would you specify the words with the victory?
Sure. I would like to replace the words "look at the agreement" with the words "review and vote on the agreement."
Jan, do you have those words?
Thank you. That's all I have.
And has a motion to modify?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any first assessment on that? Fall in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the minutes as amended are before. Is any other modification to change? Are we ready to vote? Fall in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, the fun part of the program. We have some special recognition here today. Very excited about how well our youth sports teams have been doing and really what the programs that our coaches, our volunteers, our parents, and the kids have put together. It just seems each year we recognize more and more kids and more and more teams. So we've got a number of teams to recognize today. Fellow selectmen, I'm going to ask your help in terms of handing out these certificates. Why don't we stand up and move over?
Sure.
And Jerry, do you have the, our World Series attendees up?
Coming in now.
All right. Will, let me take, let me take. First of all, I'm seeing you guys so often at these recognition events, from the Bluefish game to Sherman Green to here, that I think, feel like we're family almost already. So another time around, I've said this each time, and I just, you guys have impressed us all and made us proud in town with your actions on the field, how far you've gone, and just your spirit of play and everything else. But what's impressed me personally the most is how you've acted off the field, how you've conducted yourselves, how your coaches and you have interacted, how you've responded to your success. Sometimes we talk about learning how to deal with a loss, but it's also tough to learn how to deal with wins and the success that this team has had, and I'm thrilled that you guys have represented Fairfield so well. So the selectmen, we've got a certificate for each of you, and we'd like to give you a chance to get recognized here. So John Lucas, not here? Coach, are you up here? Can you take these? Bill Murray. TJ Paletta. All right. Maddie Clarkin. Here you go. Michael, all right. There you go. Matt Gubel. Bill Murray. No, Ryan Murray. And Patrick Steed. Thank you, team. Guys, great job again. All right, next up, we've got, not only have we had successful boys Little Teams, we've had some tremendous success on the girls Little League side. We've got two teams here today to recognize, the Fairfield Little League Girls Softball Junior Section One Champions and the Fairfield Little League Girls Softball Twelve-Year-Old New England Champions. Now, in uniform. All right, girls, way to go. There's Casey Elliott here. Ron Nelson. Didn't think that was a girl's name. John Spooner. Madison Burris.
Most of these girls are in high school and they're actually playing other sports today.
Anna Carrario. Molly Hamilton. Megan Holden. Dana Hyde. Gabriella Natale. Alice Nelson. Samantha Platts. Erin Rosengen. Alexandra Scholl. And Julia Wilson. All right, thanks, Coach. And next up, sounds like one of our coach, Ed Finnegan. Coach, great job here. Dave McCartney, there you are. Jerry Rasmussen. Doug Romero. Megan Belinski. Caleb Evans. Mary Rose Finnegan, all right. Michaela O'Donnell. And Megan Schutzen. And Coach, before you go too far, we have... We have a certificate here from Congressman Jim Hines, a certificate of special recognition to the Fairfield Little Girl Softball Team on winning the 2012 Little Connecticut Championship. Next up, we have our Boys Little League District Two champs, coaches, manager. Hats and ties, way to go, guys. You travel well. And Owen Stanton. That's a group. Now, I also think we had, also, coaches and kids, we've had a certificate of special recognition from Congressman Jim Hines to the Fairfield National Little League on winning the nine, ten-year-old Connecticut District Two Champions. Now, I believe we also have some special recognition from our state delegation for the teams here. And Brenda Tony, did you want to come up and take the mic and...
I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for having us do this, but most important of all, it's fantastic to see the town recognize all the kids, all the boys and all the girls who participate in this. You do a great job in representing our community and the countless other kids who play Little League baseball and softball. So for this, you all deserve tremendous credit, and we're thrilled to have teams be recognized because as talented as each individual kid is, you learn to play as a team. You learn to win and lose as a team, and that's something that is so valued that we don't teach enough of. So for all of you, as I saw all of you guys come in and all the girls that are out there, the fact of the matter is you all care very much for each other, and those are wonderful values to have. So I want to thank the coaches. I want to thank all the parents who give all their time and enthusiasm and chauffeuring, that you deserve a lot of credit as well. So I'll defer to Brenda to speak as well.
I just want to say congratulations and great job, guys, and hope to see you back again next year.
Beautiful. Right. Open it up. This is a recommendation from the State Connecticut General Assembly, because truly as well as anything else, these kids represent Fairfield to the rest of the state and to the district. So for that, we're also very proud to be able to do this. And people conspiracy moment, we want to recognize the little softball team as well. Good job, boys.
Well, congratulations, girls, and I just want to say that growing up in Fairfield, I was one of the first girls allowed on the Little League teams back then, when I was in sixth grade at North Straffield School. It was the first year they let girls on Little League. And I really didn't particularly want to play Little League, but the boys were all teasing us, so I thought, well, I'm definitely going to play now. So a bunch of girls decided to join, and we ended up winning the championship, our team that year, with girls on the team. So I'm very proud of all of you personally, and keep up the good work.
And I just wanted to add that you girls are just fantastic in your representation, and the predecessors before you have succeeded. You have put Fairfield on the map for girls softball as well. So you all deserve a lot of credit, and you deserve a lot of recognition. So we're so happy to have you here. Thrilled to have you here.
Who do you have to hold this? Brittany, Brittany, you look nice. Everybody can do this. Here you go. And Jerry, thank you for your help. Thanks, Jerry. Hey, Jerry. Thank you so much. All right, moving things along. Next up, item five on our agenda. We have a resignation. This is for information only from the Fairfield Housing Authority. Dorothy Anderson of 351 Figler Avenue. Item six on the agenda, appointments for the FairTV Operational Committee. Selectmen, would you prefer to do these one at a time or as a group in preference? Let me then have a motion to appoint Thomas Flynn, James Cannelli, and Pamela Jones to the FairTV Operational Committee.
Thomas.
Second? First off, is Tom Flynn, I can, Mr. Flynn, I can see you're here. Mr. Cannelli, I know he was running, had some traffic issues. He called ahead. And is Pam here, Pamela Jones?
I didn't see her.
See her?
Yeah.
Any questions from the committee, or from the board?
Well, just a comment. Clearly, this is one-sided politically, and I assume a no from our past conversation that we will have others representing other parties as well as our Republican colleagues. I know that Mr. Cannelli clearly has been before this board. It makes sense to me to have him continue to serve in this capacity, and Ms. Jones serving at this point on the cable advisory council. Hopefully, I'm getting the last C correct in that. And Mr. Flynn, I have known through the first organization I joined here in Fairfield, which is the League of Women Voters. And I think it's wonderful that he is interested as a league member and certainly as a citizen and someone involved in this town. I think he will bring a tremendous skill set to this group, and particularly that league perspective that I value so much, which is somewhat what I spoke to the last time, is that we really need people who are going to be fair, and Mr. Flynn is definitely one of those people. So I certainly am willing to support these three folks, and happily so, and clearly with the intent that we are going to be adding others to balance out this committee.
I think if I might jump in here for just a minute and kind of set the stage for where we are. We need some people on the FairTV Operational Committee since the terms have currently expired. The charge, we have an existing charge. It says we can have five to seven members appointed by the Board of Selectmen, including one member who's serving currently on the Area Two Cable Advisory Council. One of the nominees, Pamela Jones, currently fits that charge. Mr. Flynn is well-known in the community, has served on the League of Women Voters for a number of years, certainly somebody who's active, and certainly somebody who understands the importance of FairTV to our political process and in our government. So I think tremendous background there. And Mr. Cannelli certainly has been passionate and been one of the prime movers in getting FairTV to where it is at this point. There certainly is, we're looking for some additional people to volunteer, to step up so we can do two things. Get the number of folks on the board, number of members of the FairTV Operating Committee up to the five minimum that we look for in the charge, as well as getting some more political balance, as we do with all of our committees. We want to make sure that each of the parties is represented from that standpoint. I know Mr. Kylie's been reaching out to various folks and is confident that he'll have some nominees forced, but if there's anybody out there who's willing to step up, we certainly would consider them also. So with that, are there any...
Just a couple of quick comments. I would echo the comments of my fellow selectmen, that we have three great candidates, Mr. Flynn I've known for a long time, as well as Pam, and I've spent a lot of time with Jim, and Jim does have the heart and the history and a lot of enthusiasm for this particular project. So I do believe we have three good candidates. I did have a conversation with the first selectman about this election process. We're not sure whether we're going to end up with five or seven, and we're not sure what that makeup with the board is going to be. I am awaiting some applicants or some folks to step up and volunteer from the Republican side of the aisle. So I think since this is a new committee, and we had discussed this briefly offline, now if Mr. Flynn is here and we have any questions for him, which I do not at the moment, I know your background quite well, and you're very qualified to be on this committee, and there's nobody here I do not support. I think it might be better governance if we just wait a meeting until we have at least a couple, three other members, so that when we start the committee, the committee is not just focused or represented from one, from one party. That would be all that I would have requested. If we could, you know, ask our questions today, if we have any, so that the folks don't have to come back or take any other questions offline of these three people, and then come back and form the committee as a whole at our first meeting in October.
Yep. I would just add, I don't think there's any political bias in the folks that we have, but you certainly want to avoid the appearance of any political bias, and that's why we have the guidelines in our charter to have political balance on such committees. So I think that that will, I would support Mr. Kylie's suggestion on postponing this meeting. And just so the folks can get kind of a start on what we're going to ask, basically, we've had several meetings and discussions on this. We're looking at kind of revising the charge in order to make it current, so if you will, our charge to the new committee, we could take a look at the charge and decide kind of one of two things. Does it, is it something that comes back to this board? Is that the best venue for it to update the charge and proceed? Or is it something that in fact should go to the RTM to be encoded into an ordinance? And we'll leave that up to you for the moment. I also think that we should probably put some timeline or sunset on this in terms of, since the, because it may go to the RTM, they may want to have the flexibility of setting up their own rules and guidelines, and in fact, when we get to these appointments, that we modify. that we modify them to be a specific, uh, well, actually, we have the terms down here through July, uh, 2013, and the thought process was that gives the group enough time to revise the charge and bring it back to us, or revise the charge and get an ordinance through the RTM, however they, uh, feel is most appropriate to do that. So, with that, um, unless there's any discussion, uh, do I have a motion to postpone?
I move to, um, postpone this item to a date certain, and that date being our October, our first October meeting. I don't have a date in front of me. The third? Then I'll make that October 3rd.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, and then, Mr. Flynn, I want to thank you for showing up today. We postponed this, but you have done your duty in terms of showing up here. You're welcome to go back on the third if you choose. You have a free afternoon. We'd love to, uh, have you back then, but, uh, your history and your credentials speak for themselves in that regard. Um, are we ready to vote on the postponement?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Flynn. Next up, banner requests. Uh, what we have in your packet, you will see, um, our Sherman Green banner policy that was adopted, uh, I'm going to say last summer at some point.
Right.
Uh, actually, Mr. Kylie, your predecessor, Mr. Walsh, had a lot to do with drafting this up for, uh, our review and approval.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the policy is, we've been trying to follow, if a banner fits these guidelines, um, my office has been charged by this board of saying yes, and scheduling the time. If a banner request doesn't fit these guidelines, my office has been charged with saying no and rejecting it because it doesn't meet the guidelines. Uh, the way we kind of balance that is if there's a group that wants to appeal, we then bring them before this board. Uh, so we have two appeals today. You have the packets following that in your, uh, packets. Uh, let's see. Let's start with the, uh, first one. If I can have a motion to, let's see, to here, consider and act upon a request from the Tick Born Disease Alliance to hang a banner in Sherman Green, I have a motion to accept. Someone? A second?
Second.
Anybody here from that organization? Okay. Um, let me then kick this off. With part of our intent, and, uh, in developing the banner policy, uh, was to do our best to use the, uh, Sherman Green venue and format to promote, uh, activities in downtown, which are important in Fairfield, activities throughout the town of Fairfield, uh, but basically doing courage and help our businesses, our organizations, um, in their mission of raising money, having fun, or helping out. So, uh, in this case, this didn't seem to quite meet that, as much as it's trying to raise awareness, uh, and not that Lyme disease isn't in fourth cause, it just didn't seem to fit the qualifications. So, with that kind of an intro, any discussion or comments from the board?
Questions? Uh, timing-wise, in terms of other banners that are scheduled for that time, do we know if there's conflict? I know it's a little ways out, but we anticipate that there will be a number of other banners up.
Uh, there should, we've, we've done a pretty good job of having a number of banners up. There's not, uh, we're not booked, it's not in global capacity at this point, that that wasn't raised as an issue.
And assuming there is space available, um, would there be a reason that we'd want less banners there? In other words, I'm, what I'm getting at is, this certainly is an issue. Lyme disease is quite an issue in the community, um, and I'm wondering if it makes sense if there is space available to allow this exception. I'm leaning towards this, a better way of saying that.
Okay. Mr. Kylie, did you have any thoughts?
Just, I guess my one question would be, is, is there any more detail on why it was reviewed? Specifically? It just didn't seem to, that's...
It didn't, it specifically didn't fit the guidelines that we, we basically said, we need an event Fairfield-oriented, drawing people to town.
Okay.
This is from a Westport resident. And, um, this is about an event in Sherwin, Sherwood Island State Park. All right, so it's within the charge of the board to make exceptions. That's why they feel to come here.
Right. Okay.
Uh, it's just a question of whether we choose to do that.
No. No, this is my first time too. I was just trying to understand the general process.
Okay. Yep. We've, we've made exceptions in the past, and, and Kristen, fill me in, or add it on this one, but for typically, so let's say a Fairfield group that's having an event at decline, where it's a lot of Fairfield, uh, I think it was a choir group that had a large percentage of Fairfield kids in the choir group. They practice in Fairfield, they grew up in Fairfield. The event was at decline, and there are only so many venues, choir groups, so it seemed to make sense to support that initiative.
Okay.
Um, we went back and forth on kind of nonprofits and profits, and we kind of, uh, I think you can see from the guidelines, we kind of settled on the fact that it should be, um, something that promotes Fairfield, whether it's profit or nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we did focus on kind of events, so if, uh, some group wins an award, we didn't want to just advertise the award.
Right.
If some group was just advertising for new members, we didn't want to just advertise for new members.
Got it.
We wanted it to be about something, specific dates drawn, it didn't make, that didn't make sense.
Thank you for that information.
Any other discussion? Any, any comments for the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Would we like to vote?
Just one other comment. I really, I think again, the issue of space, uh, this is an event in Westport, um, but it certainly, Lyme disease does not have any order, so, um, but I think, you know, to be fair to our, our guidelines, um, so it's, I guess it raises a question of, um, if, if there are others, and it sounds like we have space avail, we, we have space available, or are you not sure if we do at this point?
Uh, the space has not been raised as an issue at this point. I think the, the precedent, uh, you start to look at, if there are lots of good causes, there are, we could easily run out of space if every cause or organization. And, uh, I think the reason we tried to come up with the guidelines was to give us some, um, definition of when to use the Sherman Green, um, banner or not. If, uh, if the problem with this is if they sign up and we say yes, then if another group comes in, we run into a space conflict, can't go back to them and say no. Because if they put out the money for the banner, plan to do that, incorporate that into their marketing, it could be fair to them. Not going to happen. And, uh...
I'm good.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Opposed? Uh, no objections? Thank you. All right, next up, a request from the county assemblies to hang a banner of Sherman Green. To here, consider and act upon a request for the county assembly to hang a banner of Sherman Green, I have a motion to accept.
Someone?
A second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. I think similar, uh, it's, it's same kind of setup, same kind of reason this is, the appeal is before us. Uh, the event date is January 18th and 19th. Um, is your organization based out of Fairfield? Yes. If the event is held in Fairfield, no. And you can see some attached information here. Kristen?
Uh, I think the difference between the previous application and this one is, the event is too large to be held in Fairfield. I know that there are a number of Fairfield residents who participate in this event. Um, so I think there is a slight difference in this, in this one, in that there is an venue here in our town, yet people in our town participate.
Mr. Kylie, any thoughts?
I'm good.
Uh, any comments from the public? Is anybody here from the, uh, county assembly? I've seen none. It's back and forth. It does also appear that, uh, charity recipient, there are charity recipients that do fundraising out of this, and, uh, looking down, it looks like there are a number of, uh, Fairfield organizations, looking at, uh, Cannelli After School Program and Operation Hope, Center for Women and Families, uh, it seemed to, uh, jump out here among their list of recipients. Were there any discussions before we vote?
No.
All in favor of this one? Thank you. Moving on. Next up, uh, to here, consider and act upon a request from the Penfield Building Committee to the Board of Selectmen to disband. May I have a motion to accept?
Someone?
A second?
Second.
All right. Is anybody here for the Penfield Building Committee? Did you, did you want to say anything? And if you did, could you please come to the podium, state your name, so we all know who you are?
Linda Crowley, 112 Alley Boulevard, uh, Penfield Building Committee. On behalf of the committee, we would like to disband and turn over the $13,000-plus dollars, uh, remaining in the budget to the Fairfield Town and Next Word Committee, and also have the rest of the committee enjoy the pavilion. Thank you.
Any, um, questions or discussions from the board?
Um, first, thank you very much to you, Linda, and to your committee for a job well done in a Penfield Pavilion that is absolutely beautiful and functional. Thank you very much for that. And a quick question. Since they are giving money back, are there any, since we did get some aid money on this project, do we have any concerns, or are there any questions that need to be answered for us to take the money back, or is it ours to take back?
Well, I believe what they're planning on doing is, is the building committee charge is to use the funds as appropriate to finish it, and I think what they're suggesting here is there are two things, two projects. Uh, one is a plaque, but I don't think that's the major use of money, uh, for those of you that have a chance to go down to Penfield. And that's like gorgeous facility, uh, tremendous work, and again, the committee did a, I think, a phenomenal job, and it's really a, a gem of an asset now to the town. However, uh, when you're inside, and there's a band playing or some music, it does get a little loud, and in some of our committee meetings in there, it's gotten a little loud. So, they're looking at doing some enhanced soundproofing to make the acoustics work better from that standpoint. So, I think this money has basically gone back to Parks and Rec to be a contribution towards that. They should cover some of it, I think, and then, um...
That's correct. There is a bucket list to finish up with the operation, and since it's already in, uh, operation, and it has been a very successful year for the Parks and Rec Division, it really should come from that department as to the rest of the, uh, tick list, to be sure that everything's completed.
Okay.
And I know that in talking with the Director of Parks and Rec, there's been, uh, acoustic engineers brought on board to take a look at what's the best way to address the acoustic issues, uh, in Penfield. So, I think that, uh, the building committee is probably going to get tired of meeting every month just to evaluate that one issue, so I think that their work...
No, we just felt that, uh, with the way the budget was, at this point, even with the operation, there will always be something that needs to be maintained, so that would be an integral part of keeping it up and keeping it in the budget as well. So, at that point, when Parks and Rec did not know, when they established their budget, what the budget would be for the Penfield Pavilion, because we had really only had one month last year when we opened up, and then we had Hurricane Irene, which then set everything back again for maintenance. So, then, in the meantime, everything that was being done, a lot was done by the Engineering Department in cooperation with the Public Works Department to achieve a lot of the work that now is being done with the buffer, which of course was put up last night because of the, uh, hurricane remnants of Isabel coming through. So, it really was quite a teamwork, uh, for all the departments, uh, and not to belittle any other departments as well. For example, the Health Department, building, uh, planning and zoning, everyone had an integral part in participating in this, uh, pavilion. So, it was really not only a work of art, but it's, it shows the great cooperation between the municipal people, the, the community people, and also the state and, uh, federal government.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board?
No questions, if they come, and if I may. And thank you to Linda, and also thanks especially to Jim Gallagher, uh, the Chair of the Committee, who really put his heart and soul into this and so many other efforts in the town, so just want to thank all the members, and specifically the Chair.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, please convey our congratulations and thanks to the building committee for their job well done.
Will do. Thank you.
Uh, next up, from the Director of Health, to here, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that an increase in the estimated revenue of federal grants in the amount of $5,000 be made to cover the cost of Fairfield's continued efforts to further develop the Fairfield Eastern Medical Reserve Corps, and to promote the integration of the MRC unit into the local public health and emergency response system. Further resolve that first selectman is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the National Association of County and City Health Officials. Nacho?
Nacho.
To, to conduct activities described in the Nacho dash MRC Capacity Building Award, with anticipated contract period of September 15, 2012, to September 15, 2013, these costs are 100% reimbursable. Mr. Cleary, any comments?
Sure. This is a, an annual grant, a capacity building award. It's a, it's an award of funds to build, further build the Medical Reserve Corps, um, and some of the activities that we've used this for are just really annual training, education, shirts, uh, the materials they need. Uh, this year, we proposed the same, some staffing time, uh, to further develop it, some, uh, some additional shirts and some supplies for shelters. So, for example, with the Medical Reserve Corps, served at last year's shelter during Tropical Storm Irene, uh, they, they staffed 35 physicians for 50 hours straight, um, and they also sent nurses in, uh, the hur, the, uh, winter storm at the end of October up to, uh, Middletown and Danbury to help with regular and special needs shelters. So, we're just, this is an annual award that goes along with our regular building of the Medical Reserve Corps, incorporating it into the town's emergency response structure.
Mr. Cleary, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Cleary, and for coming back again and again, and as you do with this, and for all the excellent work that you do. Just a question about, remember discussion in the past, the web-based, uh, database, and just wondering where that stands and what kind of access that gives to, to everyone, and how, if you can just briefly update us on that.
Well, what's happened with that, there was, there was a, a state effort to establish this, and the state has con, contracted with Yale to produce a product, and that's sort of, uh, under development still. They, they've, they've produced a product that doesn't meet the needs of the MRC at this point, so they haven't, we haven't been able to fully launch it and train to that. Uh, so, we are sort of in limbo with that particular project of it, uh, but the state did assume that, and, uh, we have been, we continue to develop, we have a, a database of our own that we continue to develop and add and enhance each year, um, and so, uh, we'll, we'll continue with that, um, as well.
And the one that you are using is a web-based?
It's not at this point. It's not at this point. We're looking to, this year, to make that upgrade, to allow, uh, MRC members to edit their own contact information and to facilitate that a little bit more easily than, you know, we, we're in the process of updating our nursing database, which was, will be a web-based, um, new database, uh, and so, we're, you could be using a, a similar program or the same program, or to, to take that knowledge and transfer it to, uh, establishing a MRC online database.
And is that done via contractors outside of IT, or through, in working conjunction with the IT department?
We work with, with IT, uh, you know, so we work with them. They, you know, Don Leslie's group actually hired the, and selected the nursing, uh, subcontractor that's developing the nursing... the nursing subcontractor that's developing the nursing database, and they'll do the same for this project.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Any further comments? Are we ready to vote? Okay, sorry. May I have a motion to hear, consider and act upon the following?
So moved.
A second? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary? If you'd just stay where you are. Next up, from the Director of Health, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that the funds be transferred from an increase in grant revenue in the amount of $10,000 to cover the cost of a capacity building project to improve and enhance medical and public health functions that support emergency shelter operations. Further resolve that the first selectman is hereby authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the Office of the Surgeon General, Division of the Pavilion Volunteer Medical Reserve Corps in collaboration with the National Association of County and City Health Officials to conduct activities described in the 2012-2013 MRC Capacity Building Award Contract. These costs are 100% reimbursable, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Cleary, can you fill us in on this one?
Sure, this year, the Office of the Surgeon General announced competitive awards. So the capacity building award is essentially, you know, if we fill out the application and it meets the criteria, we're awarded that. This is a competitive award, you can apply for up to $10,000, so we've done so. We're going to be using our Preparedness Coordinator in the Health Department to look specifically at developing a medical care, a shelter medical care toolkit. And that's part of the design of this competitive award, is that you design a project that can be repeated in other towns and other entities and by other Medical Reserve Corps. So essentially, we're looking at how to properly deliver medical care in a shelter, looking at all the different standards that are out there, and there are a variety of different standards, and to come up with something that works for the Town of Fairfield that is simplified and that can be repeated in other towns. And so that's why we're applying for this competitive award for $10,000 to do just that.
You touched on one of my questions, which was with respect to the source material. In order to do that, I assume that prior learning from experiences such as you had last year, what are some of the other sources that will be used in the development of this document?
Well, there's several documents out there. The Red Cross probably has the most comprehensive, but the Red Cross document covers a variety of procedures that are, at this point, really beyond the scope to be reasonably achieved while protecting the licensure of those doing those activities. And so what we really need to look at is what procedures can we really achieve using manuals like the Red Cross Shelter Medical Shelter Manual and other manuals that have been out there, developed to simplify that and say, you know, these are the procedures that someone, someone given a license can be trained to, given the right license can be trained to, and we can, you know, conduct, develop a train-the-trainer method and have a cadre of people that are trained to a specific policy and procedure based upon other protocols. But it goes beyond that in terms of having any of these procedures have to have sign off from a medical advisor. So we will be having standing medical orders that are signed by a medical advisor to do these procedures. And essentially that protects the medical professionals that are doing these activities against any liability related to their licensure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just touch a little bit on the independent contractor that's going to be used on this project within this bid, just the process on who they are, or how they're chosen, or how they fit into the program?
Sure, Mary Jo Panetary is our current Public Health Preparedness Consultant. She's been with the department for a number of years. She was our former nursing supervisor who retired, and she's come back in a, well, she resigned from her position, and she's come back as the preparedness person for the Health Department, and she's been doing that role for three years now. And so we will simply supplement her hours to conduct these activities. She already works, because it's part of her role, she already works on the Medical Reserve Corps activities. She does the updates of the national website and all the things that are required of the first award that we talked about. And so it's a natural transition to have her take on this project, as she is a registered nurse, is a nursing supervisor, was a nursing supervisor, has the skills to do what's needed, and the understanding to develop the manual in a way that, you know, achieves the protections that we desire.
But being that this is new, was there, can you talk me through the process, the selection process that you went through to come to the conclusion that you've got the right person?
The process would be, you know, we've been working with Mary Jo for years, she's been with the Health Department since the 80s. She's a trusted employee, and was for the town for a number of years, and, you know, she's doing this activity. We didn't expand the scope because we thought it was a natural fit for her to supplement her hours with this type of activity.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor? All right. Mr. Cleary, looks like you're up again. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that funds to be transferred from an increase in grant revenue in the amount of up to $15,070. That's made up of $7,535 per year of this two-year contract to cover the cost of a cardiovascular disease prevention program focusing on policy environmental change for citizens served by the Fairfield Health Department. And further resolve that the first selectman is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health. These costs are 100% reimbursable by a 9-1-12 to 6-30-14 State of Connecticut Preventive Health and Health Services Block Grant. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Cleary, can you fill us in on this one?
Sure, the block grant is a grant that we've been receiving from the state for decades. It has supported things like our Lemon Live Program, our diabetes, prediabetes prevention program. This year, in conjunction with the Bike Walk Coalition, the Bike Walk Advisory Board, the Town's Engineering Department, what we're using the money for is a two-year project, the state has asked for two-year contracts this year, and the first year of which will be used for striping signage and stenciling of a one-mile stretch of Mill Plain Road to create a bike path. And then the second year funding will go for the same. The location, depending on where they are in the project, will vary potentially from the second year, which road will be selected to expand that. Basically, at the end of the two-year period, we'd love to have two miles of bike path covered by this grant.
Any questions from the board?
I, as I think some people here know, I, this is certainly something that I'm thrilled to see happen. I want to thank Sarah Levy from your department for her work in helping to bring together people in the community around this issue, as well as the volunteers in town, and also want to recognize Bill Hurley for his leadership in this as well. I think this infrastructure is important in allowing for activity and health, and this is a great way to make that happen, so thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, item 12. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that funds be transferred from an increase in grant revenue in the amount of $5,675 to cover the cost of programs sponsored by Adults and Children Together, Fairfield Substance Abuse Prevention Council. And further resolve that the first selectman is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the Regional Youth Adult Substance Abuse Project, RIASAP. These costs are 100% reimbursable by a 7-1-12 to 6-30-13 State of Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services Grant to local prevention councils administered by RIASAP. Mr. Cleary, could you be kind enough to take us through that?
Sure, I'm here to present, I was asked to present on this one. Our Health Department supervised this grant in the past for a number of years, and so we offered to come here tonight and represent this particular grant. Essentially, this grant has supported substance abuse prevention activities in the town for a number of years. One of the sort of projects that is most recognized is the mini-grant projects that they've done to support a variety of activities designed to give children healthy choices in terms of how to fill their time with positive projects rather than with substance abuse. And so some of the projects have been community gardens, a resource book for parents for dealing with issues of substance abuse, and projects like that. This year, there may be a change in terms of the Fairfield Cares taking over the administration of the technical part of the grant. The fiscal oversight will still be done by the town, by the, I know the committee has sort of talked about how that will be handled, but I think the Health Department and other towns' departments will handle that. But essentially, it'll continue in a similar fashion. They're not 100% sure on the sort of the mini-grant projects, because Fairfield Cares might take over and decide to alter the education component of it. But they'll still be funding going to the two high schools and for alcohol prevention in $1,000 and $500 to a smoking prevention project done through in conjunction with RIASAP.
Any other questions?
No question, just a comment and a word of thanks for all the work the town does on these types of programs for these kids and for these families, because as everyone has learned over the years, early prevention is the key to, you know, assisting people and children and families with these issues, and they're also the key to preventing long-term abuse and problems for society. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we can do a lot more in these areas, and we certainly should, so I fully support this.
Thank you, and that's music to my ears this morning. The meeting I started out my day with was with the Fairfield Cares Alcohol and Health Task Force, and just to, I've had some conversation with that group, with the ACT folks, the Health Department, and the first selectmen, and hope that we can continue that here at the Board of Selectmen level, to talk more specifically about how that looks going forward. And I couldn't agree more, I think prevention is key, is what I say all the time, and what we've learned about brain development and children's and young people's use of substances and how it impacts their developing brains, is a critical issue. So this is, I'm thrilled that we have all these resources available, that we have this grant money, though of course it'd be great if it were more, excuse me, but also that we have people willing to work together and take leadership on the issue, so we're fortunate in that. And to be continued. In other words, would like to, and hope to come back to you on behalf of, and together with Fairfield Cares, to talk more about the specifics of that.
Thank you, and I would echo my two colleagues and the comments about how very important this initiative is to our community, and bringing us closer together and making sure we all come together to help resolve these issues. Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Did we make a motion or not? May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Now that we have it moved and formed into the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary, thank you again. Next up, item 13, from the Director of Public Works, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that the Town of Fairfield enter into municipal energy opportunity agreements with the United Illuminating Company, and further resolve that the first selectman is authorized to execute the required documents in order to participate in an energy conservation program called Energy Opportunity. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Bowman, could you enlighten us, so to speak?
You enlighten, I'll enlighten you. Basically, this is the second time this year we've been here with this program. We'll probably be back once more, before the year's over, actually. But we want to get this, make sure there's enough money available in UI before someone else uses it up. So these three are being presented. And basically, it's a great program, because the way it's designed, there's no upfront cost in 90% of the cases for the town. The money is paid for by combination of a grant and a zero-interest loan against the savings projected on the result of the projects. So over three years, there's a savings, it has to be paid after the three years, and that's what we've done here. We've designed a program for the Town Garage, which includes upgrading all the lighting there to both, the exterior lighting will all be LED, the interior lighting will be some LED, but otherwise upgraded TA fluorescents with full-range lighting. So again, it's lighting that's similar to outdoor lighting, it's like being in the sunlight, it's a very good program. As well as the solar tube, which, if you can see, the solar tubes draw outside light in through the surface, sort of like a skylight, but they actually draw 100% of the light in and spread it through refractory over a distance. You put one in over where the welder works, which is 20 feet up in the ceiling, it drops down 20 feet, and you can see the first time this works, you can actually see what he's doing. It works better, you shut the lights off, it works better than the lights that are there. We have it in the rec center, we have it at Penfield, and we have it at Jennings Beach. So it's just a simple, amazing technology that really just works so well. In addition, at the Waste Water Treatment Plant, we'll have a number of programs going in there. We already had one approved earlier this year, and this is a second program, which will upgrade their lighting, both exterior and interior lighting. Exterior, again, LED, interior, the upgraded fluorescent with this full-range lighting. The upgraded fluorescent with the full-range lighting also has almost the same lifespan as the LED lighting, uses 50% less energy, so it's pretty equivalent to LED in that sense. LED may last a little lot longer, but it just gives you the same savings, so it works out very well. And again, at the transfer station, we're putting again the solar, the lighting, sun force, just to drop in the lighting through the roof to provide more lighting as well. So those three programs, in total about $341,000. $126,000 in grants, and the rest is in the zero-interest loans for the program. Again, this year now, if these are approved, we'll have, who's just around $85,000 in programs, and maybe the next meeting, we'll be back with another couple hundred thousand dollars. There's a cap which we can draw in from UI County to Beach County on an annual basis, and we intend to get that cap.
Mr. Bowman, first off, just thank you again. You've done phenomenal work in all of our energy conservation efforts, and really led a charge for the town there, so at every opportunity I get, I just want to make sure that we recognize you for your efforts and everything you've done. But any questions from the board?
Thank you very much, Mr. Bowman, and I concur with the first selectmen. It's phenomenal, and I was just chuckling when you said, "We intend to hit that cap." Of course you do, that's what you do, which is phenomenal. And I guess it's more of a, it's a question slash comment, which is about working in tandem in terms of projects as you make choices. And I said this to Mark Barnhart when he was here about the streetscape improvement, that it makes sense that this is through Public Works, and I wonder if there is any other communication with other bodies. And part of why I ask that is last night, I was watching the Solarize Connecticut Presentation on TV, just for fun, and it was actually very entertaining, no pun intended, but it was just so interesting to see what was before and available to us as a town. And when coming here today, I'm thinking about, these efforts are all in tandem, how do you work together with groups like the Clean Energy Task Force, and does that apply? And do you see that applying in this case?
Yes, we work with Clean Energy Task Force to help us with these programs, to present them to them for their review at all times. Solarize Connecticut also with Clean Energy Task Force and some of the other groups out there, and more and more people are getting involved. Just a point, and some more people that have Task Force, which are, it's getting more and more involved. We also have this PACE program coming, which is another program where the state will provide money to the owners of local businesses, through low-interest loans, which then can attach to their property taxes. And the improvements then would stay with the property, so if the owner sells them, those improvements end, and the cost of them stays with the new owner. So the way of getting all kinds of energy improvements, it'll start out just for TV, but all these kind of energy improvements also can be made now, a low-interest loan fund being made available to these towns that are participating, we're one of them to do that also. So it just keeps spreading out more and more in different ways, you're right, and there's more and more groups working with us, Green Drinks Group, we work with them all. We work with them all.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you for doing that, because I do think that network, and certainly watching that program last night with Solarize Connecticut, talked about the network, and you're clearly taking full advantage of that, so I'm really glad to hear it.
Any comments from the public? None, back to the board.
Just a quick one, thank you. Ed, thank you to you and your team for many, many years. You've been bringing the programs before our boards, that was saving us money and making us more efficient and energy-friendly, so thank you for that. One quick question. Is there yet a process in place, like at the end of the year or the end of two years, to go back and measure the successes or the savings? Have you thought about how we would look back and how we would measure, and maybe how we could report back to look back and say, you know what, this is what we thought we would say 12 months ago, this is what really happened, and these are the results, you know, for better or for worse?
Yeah, we basically haven't formalized. We do that by looking at the bills every month. Some cases, it's very obvious, because the ones we did at the sewage treatment plant were, that one program saved 700,000 KW each in one year, I mean, it's very obvious. Some of them are small, and it's hard to pinpoint, because if it's a $10,000 saving over a period of a year, and you have higher heating, say with a heating saving, you have higher heating degree days or higher cooling degree days, it's very hard to actually pinpoint the savings. But the ones that can be, yes, we can do that. And we've done it, we just haven't pinpointed it, because it's important to us to see the same thing. Are we actually getting the savings we're saying? But we'd be glad to do that at the end of the year, you know, for all these projects.
Right. And it's understandable that there are differences in weather or differences in other conditions that might make it challenging to exactly measure it, but I think you can directionally get it correct.
Yeah.
And if you look at the big picture, you'll be able to come back and, you know, explain where you were successful and where maybe we didn't quite meet our goals and where we might do better going forward.
Right. One of the things that we can tell is that from United Illuminating, on the electric usage, that our usage over the last 10 years has dropped 22%. Now, that doesn't include new buildings, of course, but from where we started, and they track that for us. Maybe that's one of the reasons we're getting another award from UI, and we're in the top 10 savers. These programs have saved tremendous, they can do that one. But yeah, I can report back, almost building by building, if you like, at the end of the year, like in December or something.
Well, without over-engineering it, maybe some way of measurement, because the better we measure, the more we know and the more successful we can be going forward. Thank you.
And certain areas where we save 22% like that, that's just a dramatic number.
It surprises me. I didn't expect it to be that.
Any further comments? All right, we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. All right. I believe there were no tax collector refunds.
No.
I have a question on that. Next up, follow-up discussion on the Chief Financial Officer's settlement agreement. I know we've had this discussion at the Board of Finance. I know we had a brief discussion on it at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. There were requests for some ongoing opportunities, so we added it to the agenda. And I realize there's some different points of view on the items. Since this is a discussion between the three of us, I would just ask that we wait to be recognized, we can make sure that the conversation flows and everybody has an opportunity to talk and stand. Everybody's been very good about that in the past, so I don't need to suggest we haven't. So with that as a lead-in, would anyone like to kick off a further discussion?
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity to have a conversation at this table, as I said last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me, here. While we did have an opportunity to ask questions at the Board of Finance, and there was some conversation, it seemed like this is an appropriate place for the three of us as the Board of Selectmen to, we will have some back-and-forth conversation. And part of what I said last time was, with respect to even some of the issues that were raised at the Board of Finance, some of those were conversations that made sense for us as a Board of Selectmen, certainly questions that surrounded this board and those of us on it. So, that was, you know, that's part of my gratitude for the ability to have this. In addition, comments were made by both Selectman Kylie and myself, and we weren't really able to have a dialogue and a back-and-forth input on that. And I think that one of the issues that I have wrestled with, and it's related to something that Selectman Kylie said the last time, was, and my perhaps poor choice of words, was a philosophical conversation, which Selectman Kylie responded to. And perhaps a better word might have been policy, but I just want to kind of go back to that point for myself. We have been given a legal opinion by the attorney in this matter, the attorney for the town, Floyd Dugas, that the First Selectmen has authority to enter into this agreement. And in fact, we have a signed agreement. There is in fact, an agreement that has been signed by the town and by Mr. Hiller with his attorney. And part of where I face any issue when there's questions is I certainly look at all sides of it and try to take in the various facts and look at what can practically be done at this point, given that there are questions that folks have had. And the question and the conversation that is happening at both the Board of Finance level and here, or at least the conversation via the comments, was what is this board's role with respect to that matter? Clearly, Mr. Dugas has ruled and has provided some very valid substantive statements related to the, with respect to the authority of the First Selectmen. One of the things that I had asked for was whether or not you are in agreement with that or not, is this a valid and binding contract on the town? And I certainly am not a lawyer myself, and I don't have a written legal opinion about that. But from conversations that I've had with attorneys who do practice in this area, anecdotal conversations, my understanding is that this is, as I had alluded to in a different way last time, this is an agreement that is enforceable, that we as a town are bound by, which is where I come into my practical standpoint in terms of this particular contract. What can we actually do as a Board of Selectmen, whatever perspective we have on the issue of authority? And whether we vote or not as a board, this contract, and this is a valid contract, that it's binding on the town. The town has signed a document, and whatever feelings I may have or others may have about how we've gotten there, and whether or not I agree with the terms of the agreement, and this is another area that I just wanted to specifically note, and I did not last time, specifically in the case of the pension bump up, I don't. I think it's something that, though may have been done in the past, I think it's a practice that we should not continue. And specifically, the fact that there is a question, I think, is something that should be looked at in the charter. And I think that in terms of the issue of what we do as a town going forward with the pension, I think that that's something that should be discussed as related to our pension documents. I, for one, would like to see us as a town discontinue that practice, and wanted to be clear about that. In terms of the, philosophically speaking, walking through this issue, if I were to say, you know what, here at the Board of Selectmen level, we should vote on this. Again, I do that as a practical matter at this point, that this particular contract is binding, and that if I were, if it were to come before me for a vote, though I am not, though I am frustrated, as I mentioned, with certain aspects of this, I would feel bound to support the agreement because of the fact that I feel that a vote against it at this point in time, given that it's been signed, would put the town at risk and would be irresponsible. So, I just wanted to go on the record with those things, and certainly open to conversation, and thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Kylie, have you got some thoughts?
Yeah, I have a few things. And I do want to echo Selectman McCarthy's, Veyhe, thanks to you for having this discussion and allowing us to bring this issue into this forum as part of our agenda. Certainly do appreciate that. That's a great opportunity. I've got a bunch of notes. I don't have anything to read. I have a bunch of thoughts, and I just want to get them out there. I'm going to start toward the back, and I'm going to attempt to respond to some of the comments that I did here, and I'll start at the back and work my way forward. One of the more striking arguments I heard was the last comment that was made, that it would be irresponsible to vote against this contract. And to me, that is putting the cart in front of the horse, because you are, that comment would tell me that you're assuming that the contract would be voted down, should it come to this board. And I have no indication whether that's true or not, for a number of reasons. We have not heard the private opinions on, from either Human Resources or the First Selectmen, or anybody else in the administration who had that information available to them when they made those decisions to enter into such agreements. So I have no information known to me today or in the past that would allow me to opine on what has happened, right, wrong, or indifferent, or sway my vote one way or the other. Backing up a second from that, I mean, this is not, this is not personal, and this is not political, nor is this partisan. This is about what I would call the professional process that we have used to get to where we are, and has that process been proper? Has it fallen within the guidelines, the goalposts of our charter? And does it conform with how we have run our government up till now and how history has shown Fairfield to run its government? So, I can't take a comment like I would vote against it, because it might have further implications. And I can't use the potential further implications of a contract to make my decision on whether I should vote for a contract or not. I think that's premature, and I think that's uninformed. You know, that's like taking, that's assuming that the result is done, and the end is already determined, and therefore, since I can't do anything about it, well, to heck with it. I'm just going to let it go. I'm not going to bring it to a vote, I'm not going to vote against it, I'm not going to vote for it, I'm not going to take any action whatsoever. So I really see that as not just counterintuitive, but I see that as a backward way of looking at the process. Not the person, not the conduct, not even the contract itself, but the process and how you would consider acting on it should it be before you. So I certainly take exception to that line of thinking. Not the person making it, but that line of thinking, because I've heard that from other people. When you come to the contract itself, I read the opinion of the attorneys, and you know, here's the deal. This is how these things work. I hire attorneys all the time. We have issues, we have situations, we have contracts. We have a predetermined outcome that we would like our company to get to or to be part of, which is why we hire the attorney to help us navigate the ship in that direction and hopefully get to that outcome. They're given information, they're given history, they're given background, they know your end game, they know what you want to do, and sometimes the square peg gets rounded off and fits into the round hole, because you can find a way to get to your end by different means than maybe somebody else would use, or different means that might be, that may be consistent with how you've conducted business in the past, or how people have been treated in the past, or how somebody else might interpret the situation. So, with all due respect, I don't agree with some of these things in here. You know, you can quote this, and you can quote that, and you can interpret this, and you can interpret that. A lot of it's bunk. This is a contract. There are components, and there are considerations in this agreement that make it a contract. It is what it is. And I think the overriding issue for me is, is there a contract that obligates the town financially? And should that contract have come through the process for review and for a vote? And to me, it's very simple. You can quote Section 6.13 or whatever it is all day long about powers and responsibilities. For me, it's more important to make sure that the town is managed properly, and I don't know that we did that in this case. And for me, it's more important for the Board of Selectmen to be engaged in employment matters, which they typically are. They're consulted, they're engaged, their opinions matter. In this case, neither one of those things happened. The board was not informed, the board was not engaged, and the board was not brought into the process. And I disagree completely with all of that. If it was solely a personnel matter, as is quoted here, you can maybe navigate around it, but I don't think good government is about using the four ends of a contract, the four corners of a contract, and finding an end result or finding a way to fit what you want it to be. I think good government is about informing people about what's going on, presenting facts, figures, and information, collecting opinions. There is a role for the CEO to play, and I'm not diminishing that whatsoever, and I understand that the CFO serves at the pleasure of the CEO. I get all of that. But we've never done this before. You could argue it both ways, and when there's gray, the good thing to do is to take the conservative approach, the time-tested, true approach, and bring it back through the process. Let the Board of Selectmen be part of the process. Examine the contract, examine the components, because we might have looked at the exact same information that you looked at and come to the same conclusion we might not have. I don't know that. And you know why I don't know that? Because I never got the information. That's very, very discouraging. So beyond the fact that it's a contract, in my opinion, that, you know, you can skirt around, it's an employment thing, and you can skirt around the CEO/ CFO thing all day long, and you can get the attorneys to opine on whatever you want them to opine on, fine, dandy, I get it. It's just not the right way to go about business for our town. It's not how we've done it in the past, it's not how we should be doing it, and I certainly do not want to do the Olay on this and just let this go past us and pretend it's okay because I can't do anything about it, or at least think I can't do anything about it. And then, gosh, guess what? We've set a precedent. Now we can do it again. If somebody really thinks this is not the right way to handle this, then I think the right way to adjust it is to take a step back, administer the process, and allow the process to take place. Because if you don't do that, then what you've done is say, hmm, well, he signed it, we're stuck with it, hmm, I can't do anything about it, too bad. And I just don't think that's the right way to govern, and it's certainly not the right way to run a business. And I wouldn't advise us to do either one. The other comment I would like to make, you know, it certainly is a contract. The other comment is about, and Kristen touched on this, is the pension thing. Another very, very gray area. You can say it's been done in the past, and if you're speaking in terms of it being done as part of a larger group reduction in force or larger group early retirement program, okay, I think you can make that argument. But I don't think you can make the argument that it has been used like a tool, that it has been used in this particular case. I really don't know of any specific cases where there has been a single pension adjustment to one person's salary where such a change was made as part of a settlement agreement. A settlement agreement that certainly was a forced resignation, even though it was first presented as a straightforward resignation, so we're... So, we're past all that. We're past all the public relations matters that were inconsistent, that were inaccurate and that didn't give anyone the full picture. So, I'm past all that. I'm, you know, I'm ready to go on to talk about the facts and the figures and I really don't think that anyone, regardless of charter interpretation, in light of history, has the right to or the ability to, within our charter, to adjust the pension the way it was adjusted in this case and I challenge that. And I encourage everyone else to think about that and to challenge that as well because if we can start using that as a tool for incentive for individual retirements and we can continue what could be a precedent-setting type of agreement like this that includes that and a number of other issues, then I think we're going down the wrong path. And the other issue that was touched on in the opinion was the budget, the compensation, and that's another area I completely disagree with. You can make the numbers work in the short term and you can say the dollars spent today are still within the budget, hmm, we changed the position, you know. There's a lot of moving pieces there and even if you can make the math work, you could, I mean, I can make the math work, trust me, I can do that. I can sit down, give me a spreadsheet, I can make the math work and I can convince you I'm not spending five cents more than I should be or have to be. Okay? That's not the question. The question is what value is the town getting in return for that money? Okay? If I'm still paying you 50 bucks but you only work in two days, which is definitely now the case now that the former CFO has taken a new position, it's no longer a theoretical question what if he did leave and only could work, you know, and that schedule is still being decided, so there's a few things going on there, but it is now a fact. You're paying for more than you're getting. So, whether you call it an opportunity lost or an opportunity cost, you're paying 50 bucks and you're getting 20 bucks worth of work, 20 bucks worth of services. So, you cannot convince me that there is not a fiduciary impact to this town based on that agreement. And then you throw in the severance and then you throw in the pension. It's a contract, it has every component of a contract, it has consideration, it falls within the guidelines and I think good government would have dictated that a contract of this nature come before this board for consideration, for a vote, at the very least in private executive session so that we understood the facts and the figures and the thinking and the information that supported it, that defended it, and brought the CEO to the conclusion to enter into the contract. I'll stop there for now. I guess I should raise it or just a couple of issues as we go through that. You know, it's always difficult dealing with personnel matters, but Charter is very clear that the CFO is responsible for the First Selectmen, of course, the First Selectmen is responsible for the First Selectmen, performance of his duties. As I mentioned before, the Board of Finance, there were concerns that were raised over the past year. And I just, I want to be very clear, there was nothing predetermined in what's going through. Because of the nature of the Charter, the nature of Human Resources, I did sit down with the attorney and explore what the options were and understand what my duties were and what options I had within the Charter to address certain issues. The key was to follow the Charter throughout and I believe we did that and I believe the, and second, we followed the attorney's advice throughout, which functionally, from a process, is the only way to be sure. It's not jumping in and deciding something first, it's sitting down and saying, what is the right way, what is the proper way, how is this accomplished? What are the options? In terms of the settlement agreement, when we sat down and reviewed the options with Mr. Hiller, we came to the joint resolution that that settlement made the most sense. With the attorney's advice at each step of the way, that that was a reasonable approach. One of our guidelines was to keep it within the budget, one of our guidelines was to make sure that the salary dollars didn't change. I did provide a flexible work program, it does say a minimum of two days, but it does say based on the First Selectmen's request, assuming all that, you know, we have flexibility to expand that. The minimum is specified, not the maximum. Mr. Hiller has his issues with Shelton to sort out and I'm pleased that he was able to work something out with him and explore his options there, but the first obligation is to make sure that the work assignments get done in Fairfield and we'll make sure that happens. Second, with respect to the benefits, we have employees and recently department heads leave, retire, we execute the benefits. The real obligation that we have is the Dependement, the Department Head's benefit program. That's what defines what our obligations are to the Department Heads when they leave. When someone retires, recently with Stan Glorzalani or Tom Brown or Rich White, we don't sit down and look at that and say, should we give you a pension? No, you're in the pension program. We don't look at that and say, should we pay you vacation days? No, it's in the program. So, we execute that benefit program and we did the same thing here with Mr. Hiller. In following past practice in terms of how we address that and specifically, as has been mentioned, there was an earlier retirement program just a few years ago that was executed exactly like this for, I believe, 27 different people where the salary adjustment was done on the final day to increase their pension program and give them about three years more of pension credit. And that was done with full knowledge of everybody and it was only approved by the First Selectmen. It did not go through the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance or the RTM. So, when looking at this and looking at past practice, that's what we followed, that's the current way that we do operate and that's the way that we've addressed this in those situations. So, in looking at that, there's some other keys here. The purpose here in the agreement, one, was to allow for new leadership and achieve fiscal office positions. It was to allow for a smooth transition for the town and frankly, for Mr. Hiller. It did recognize Mr. Hiller's tenure and we wanted to provide the ability for him to explore future options. We also wanted to maintain a professional relationship with Mr. Hiller as he left because we may have some ongoing need for his services and support if any future lawsuits come up that came during his tenure and we wanted to minimize any costs and any legal exposure for the town. So, specifically, Mr. Hiller's salary remains the same through December and after that it will decrease. In Mr. Hiller's resignation as CFO, I asked my Chief of Staff, Bob Mayer, who's a former chief fiscal officer, who served on the Board of Finance and he served and worked closely with the Finance Department in the six months as Chief of Staff. He is a CPA and has extensive experience on the accounting side, the private sector, to coordinate work assignments with Mr. Hiller and ensure all work is completed in a smooth and orderly fashion. And he'll function as Chief of Staff and Chief Fiscal Officer with no change in compensation and he took over that task this past month. As I mentioned, I did negotiate a flexible work schedule with Mr. Hiller, both to make sure the town work gets done, but also to allow him to explore options and really did that looking ahead, possibly to the spring as we neared ahead and we've done a lot of the transition to let him have the best opportunity of finding other options. The benefits in this agreement are consistent with other department heads. He's paid for unused vacation time up to a maximum of 60 days. His leaving is a result of a negotiated agreement and not of his choosing, so he's due 13 weeks severance, he's due his deferred compensation, he's due his post-retirement health insurance and he is vested in the pension program. I didn't want to penalize him for leaving early, so we identified a pension adjustment to make sure that in the long run, he's got the same pension as he stayed as long as he applied. And again, all this is consistent with past practice. So, I think that what we did is we tried to be both prudent in terms of how we looked at the cost in this regard, we tried to be respectful of Mr. Hiller and provide him with a framework and opportunities to move on. And additionally, it allowed us to take the steps forward we need to right now to keep the town moving in the right direction. So, I hope that helps clarify a few things.
Kristen?
Thank you. A couple of things. I just, I think that my experience in town government in the relatively short time that I've been involved actually has been that I've worked with a lot of amazing people, including the gentleman at this table and those I've served with on the RTM. I think that we certainly all are, at least my experience and my opinion, is that we're doing what we think is the best for the town. And sometimes we disagree about that and that's the absolute power, literally, of this country and of this town. So, I appreciate the comments that Selectman Kylie has made and that he and I have different perspectives. I just want to respond to the piece about assuming that the result's done and since there's nothing I can do about it, so be it. That's not what I'm saying. I do think that the result is done in terms of there's a signed contract that is enforceable and whatever my opinion is or anyone else's opinion, that my understanding is that we would not succeed in going forward in a court if we were to somehow decide to go back on this agreement, which we entered in in good faith. That's where I'm coming from. It's the practical reality that we're in today. However we got here and wherever we think we should have been or what could have or would have or might have been done. And I guess I'm thinking about my testimony before the TPNZ the other night. There was an 830G application that was before that body and there were a number of very compelling statements made related, before the town planning and plan and zoning mission. There were some compelling statements made about the state statute related to 830G. This is not a perfect analogy, by the way, but just to try and make my point. So, some of the people testifying spoke to the 830G statute and some of the changes that needed to be made. And when I stood up and testified, I concurred with some of the statements that were made and said, there are some very valid statements being made here, however, that's not what is before this commission tonight. What's before this commission tonight is that they had a specific application that needed to look at the issues of health and safety. And I think whatever view any of us has in terms of the process, I think that any action that we take, and just to be clear, I did not have the information, as I said last time, I was not a part of the negotiation process and not a part of the conversation, but any action that we take, and I'm not making at this point in time an assumption on a way that this body might vote, doesn't necessarily preclude this from happening in the past or in the future and doesn't, I believe, and can't effectively alter what has happened in the past without consequences. I will say again, as I said before, that I think there are some clear steps that we can take coming out of this as a learning process. I think, you know, there's always learning from situations where people disagree with one another and one of them, as I've said, is to look at the Charter and to clarify the areas that have been brought into question during the course of this and to examine that as a town in a bipartisan way. In addition, having a conversation here at the Board of Selectmen level about the policy behind personnel matters, a chance to clarify, learn, confirm, all of those things and to be able to look at that. And then again, with respect specifically to the pension, looking at perhaps our pension ordinance or the documents to address issues there and that's just a specific piece of that. So, it's certainly not that I don't care and don't see that my duties as a Selectman are to be involved in every aspect of that process that is appropriate for me to be so, but at this point in time, as a practical matter, it's my belief, not based on an assumption of any vote, it's my belief based on what I've learned through my, again, anecdotal conversations with not only attorneys but folks in business who have experience with contract as well, that it's not going to go well for us and the town if we were to go back on that, which is why at this point, again, if I were to vote on this, I would vote yes despite my reservations with and concerns and with party agreement.
Kylie, have you got some thoughts?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. And I'm not looking to rebut to every one of your comments, I'm not looking to have a back and forth between us, but since we're the main speakers, that's kind of where we are. Here's the thing. We don't know what the outcome would be if this board was to vote. I guess Selectman McCarthy Bahe would vote for the agreement even though unless she's got more information than I do, I'm not exactly sure how she could be informed enough to make that vote, but let's say that that's the case and she would vote for it. It doesn't matter where the vote comes out. You know, I don't have the information, it has never been presented to me, so I don't know how I could sit here and say I would vote for it or vote against it. I simply do not know. That is the honest, accurate answer. You know, being part of government, much like being a part of the business, you know, is about taking calculated risks once in a while and if you're afraid to take the risk because the outcome could have this or might do that, then I don't think you get anywhere as a leader, as a business official, or as a government official. Can't be afraid. There's information out there that we don't have. There's a process that I believe should have been followed that we did not follow and I strongly believe that. There's a vote that I believe needs to have been, should have been taken and still needs to be taken and I can't, you're not going to convince me that the potential danger from a predetermined estimate of what that vote could be is more important than honoring the process and adhering to what we should be doing within the structure of our government. I just can't buy that. And as evidence of that, I had to kind of chuckle, I was reading the opinion from the attorney and he's quoting the Charter and, you know, quoting the four corners of the contract and doing this and doing that and then toward the back of it, he's talking about, quote, "It is my understanding that this is consistent with the town's practice that the First Selectmen and previous administrations has done, blah, 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 blah." It was in reference to the Board of Finance. And I took that comment and I said, okay, well, that's a very convenient comment because toward the end of your document, we're trying to defend what you don't want to do for the Board of Finance, which is not the issue here. I get that. You're referring to what previous administrations would have done. Well, okay, great, I'm glad to hear it because I've been in office since 1993 and I've worked under many different administrations and I cannot fathom any one of the First Selectmen I have ever worked for, and I've spoken to some of them, honestly, off the record in the last few weeks, even considering doing this without coming to the Board of Selectmen and through the Board of Selectmen for the support and for their vote and to present the evidence of the case to them. So, if we're going to, if we're going to talk about past practice and what past administrations would have or might have done, I'm fine with that because I haven't spoken to a former First Selectman of this town that would not have brought this to the Board of Selectmen. Now, can you defend it in the Charter? All right, fine. You can defend it, the lawyers can defend it, you can defend it, you can hold up the Charter and you can say, well, I can do this, it says this in black and white, we interpret it that way, too bad. But you know what? That doesn't make it right. That doesn't make it right. That doesn't make it the right way to run your company, run your business, run your government, or treat your people. Okay? There's a difference between legally right, there's a difference between something being legal and it being right. And I firmly believe that even if you can defend the legal, which I strongly still question, and I don't agree with the points in the opinion, even if that were to be true, it still is not right. It wasn't handled properly, it wasn't released properly, and the process that we went through, which is really what we need to be talking about, is the process. You know, what process was used and what should have been done. And we could talk all we want about not doing this again and learning something from it and, you know, all that kind of, you know, nice fluffy sounding stuff, but unless you stand up and unless you have your voice heard and unless you do something about it and unless you're willing to take a chance and take a risk and push the envelope and bring the government back to where you think the government needs to be and put order back into this process, I don't think I've done my job if I don't do that. I think I need to stand up, and I really do think we need to revisit what we've done here, regardless of what the attorney is saying, regardless of what the CEO's abilities within the charter appear by opinion to be. So, I mean, yes, it's a learning process. I don't disagree with that, but if we, if we learned anything from this experience, I think what I've learned is, you know, you need to be able to identify what has happened, find the good points, find the faults, and make changes as you're going through so that you don't just have to wait until the next time to fix it. You can fix it now. You can look at it now. And you could do it without reservation, and you can do it without partisanship and politics and without getting personal about it, but I think the, the government, the sanctity of our government and our charter needs to be maintained, and I just don't think we've done it.
If I might, or a couple? Go right ahead.
Sure.
If you take the podium, please.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Lester, we all know who you are, but if you could state your name and position for the record.
Stanton Lester, I'm the town attorney. I'm sitting here and I'm listening, and I'm listening to two apparently very frustrated people. And I just have a couple of comments that I hope will make you feel a little frustrated, a little less frustrated, although they may not totally alleviate your frustration. I just want to start out by saying, Mr. Kylie, you made a comment earlier about going to lawyers and about you've dealt with lawyers and people go to lawyers and they have a set outcome, and I think that's absolutely correct. I mean, most of the people who come to see me, they have a goal in mind. They want to do something, and they want to be guided in the way they can do it so that it's legal and it's proper. And I think that's what you have, or I think Mr. Tetro said earlier that, you know, he sought the advice of counsel, he sought the advice of Floyd Dugus to kind of guide him through the procedure and so that he did things in a proper manner. And the result of that is where we are today, essentially. You've been given the opinion of Mr. Dugus, of Burcham and Moses. The key word here is opinion. It's a legal opinion, I think you've talked about that yourself. It is the lawyer's best view of the law as applied to the facts of the case. This case is not something where everything is black and white, as obviously we've seen, and that's what a lawyer is charged to do. He's charged to give guidance to his client, and I think that's what's happened here. I think that Mr. Dugus has given his opinion as to how the first selectman is to go about what he wanted to do. I should state right off the bat that I agree with this opinion. In fact, I had come to some of the same conclusions myself independently. As to your frustration, and I can see that you, that you really wanted this to be brought before the Board of Selectmen, and you still want it to be brought, but it's my opinion, after reading the charter, the whole charter, all the provisions, and, you know, a court would tell you that, that you are, you're looking at the charter, you're looking at the whole thing, and you have to, you have to put all the pieces together to get what you can out of it. And in this case, after doing that, it's my opinion, quite frankly, that you don't even get to the issue of this matter before this board, that the charter is very clear that the right to appoint and to remove the CFO, as a lot of other town offices, is vested only in the first selectman. So I think even if you wanted to come to this board and have the board take some action, quite frankly, I believe that any vote that you would take on this issue would be a nullity. It just simply wouldn't be valid, given the charter. Again, that's my opinion, but I think it's fairly clear from the charter. I know there's a provision about, I think it's 6.1, about the approval of contracts. But again, I don't think you get to that with this issue, because it's simply, in my view, something that this board doesn't have jurisdiction over to begin with. So it's not something for them properly to vote on. I mean, I know that that leaves you frustrated, and sometimes I think, just as an example, I think if you could want it, let's say, to appoint a CFO, if this board voted to appoint the CFO, you couldn't do it. Charter doesn't allow it. Or voted, you could do it unanimously, there are some conditions where some of the town officials can be removed unanimously, but again, you have to look at the charter. But as far as the CFO, and there's maybe, I don't know, nine or 10 others, only the first selectman, it's his prerogative. There are a number of town officers that the Board of Selectmen appoints and removes. And under those, you know, the first selectman would have no power in that other than as being part of this board. So, I mean, I think that's the way the charter's set up, and it probably doesn't make things easy for the first selectman, but I think that's the way it is. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but, I mean, that's the way I see it.
One of the things that I had asked for was the, the question of, you know what, legal opinion. And first of all, I'm not afraid, just to be clear. It's about trying to look at the law and to be practical. And that's right, there is risk. And what my understanding is, and I would like to know your opinion as the town attorney, if, and I don't have any other information than Mr. Kylie either, I want to reiterate This town has signed an agreement with Paul Hiller, and it's a contract. It's, you know, we can, we can call it a contract, I, we'll call it that as well. Just for argument's sake, if we were to go back and say, you know what, we don't, we don't, we don't like this, just, let's just say that we, as a Board of Selectmen, could do that, and it wasn't a nullity, for argument's sake, what then would, in your opinion, would happen with respect to the agreement?
If you had the right to void the contract? If you had the right to void this agreement?
For theoretical, for argument's sake, yes.
Strictly for argument's sake? You'd probably wind up in a lawsuit if you tried to void the agreement. The agreement would probably be upheld.
So you just said the agreement would probably be upheld?
I believe it would, yeah.
And, and that is?
Well, I mean, if you have the right?
And you, I know, I'm asking you this on the phone.
Right. What you're assuming is if you actually have the right to void the agreement? I don't think, first of all, you don't have that right, and I think you wouldn't have even gotten this far if that was your right to do this. You follow what I'm saying? So, yeah, it really, I mean, I think that it's a valid and binding agreement, and I don't think you have the right to void it, quite frankly. So it's really kind of a hypothetical question that probably doesn't have an answer. I think that if someone challenged this agreement, okay, the way it stands now, it would be upheld. You've given me a hypothetical that you actually have the right to void the agreement, which I don't think you have, so. I mean, I think as the agreement sits now, it's a valid, binding agreement, and I, quite frankly, don't think anybody has the right, I think they would be reneging, quite frankly, if they tried to void it.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. And just to get back to a couple of points. One is that, you know, I'm one of those folks that's really focused on process, and that's why we went through this. I went through this as very carefully as I could. This is the job of the first selectman, to manage the town departments and for the folks that report to them to make sure that the goals and directions are being met. I do have a, you know, I did agree to a non-disparaging clause within that, and that has, by definition, limited the comments and to Mr. Kylie's point, it does make it difficult to talk about things. Ms. McCarthy-Veighy has raised the same point and a number of other folks around town. We did that with the advice of counsel. They recommended it and suggested that that was part of a standard agreement. Given the number, the amount of angst that clause, given the turmoil of the questions that the, I can't really see agreeing to a clause like that again in the future. However, in personnel matters, it has been my experience in that, and I have yet to hear of another case where personal performance issues are evaluated in a public forum and debated across, it's not fair to the employee in question. In this case, I don't believe it would be fair to the town either. There are a lot of questions about what could have done, been done, or what should have been done. The goal is to follow the rules. The reason I went to an attorney is to follow the rules. The reason we went to the charter is to follow the rules. There are specific ways this is handled, there are specific responsibilities here, and in fairness to all, the goal is to follow the rules in doing that. Looking forward to the future, if the concern of this board is that those rules perhaps are not the best and should be modified, I'm more than happy to support that discussion and take a look at that and see how we can address those concerns or issues going forward. But it is important, as first selectman, that you follow the charter, get the legal advice you need, and make sure things are done properly and correctly, both in terms of any agreements, and in this case, the real agreement, the real obligation is defined by the department head's benefit list. What the settlement agreement does is document what happens under that agreement, but there were no new programs created within that. And to that degree, it's the same as what happened with the 27 folks that had their early pension programs identified, and whether it's one or 27, it's the same mechanism, same authority to do that, in the same way that, I will say that, you know, you don't, and I guess it, from a first selectman standpoint, where you're trying to find the right way to do things and want to make sure you navigate the water correctly, especially given some of our recent history. I went to an outside counsel first to get an independent opinion, then came back and asked Mr. Lester to take a look at that also. You know, I have trouble in understanding how, in this environment, in both the current legal situation in our society, as well as knowing the state of human resource law, that you could do anything else but follow the attorney opinion, that you have to have that basis, you have to have something, it can't be just what you feel is right or what you feel is wrong. It's got to be based on legal precedent, if you're going to protect the town and if you're going to minimize the legal exposure. We came to the settlement agreement because it was the best for both sides, it minimizes the costs and legal exposure to the town, and lets us move forward from here and allows Mr. Hiller to look at other options. Any further comments?
Just a quick one, if I may, please. The last thing I wanted to discuss is something that was brought up at our last meeting, and it's the, the effect of this type of decision and this type of communication on the teams at Town Hall. You know, there's many employees there, dedicated employees who care about our town, and the general mood there, from my observations and from direct information from them, is that they're concerned, they're hurt, they're worried. Now, I don't have an answer for that, but what I can convey is that there is a general sense of uneasiness, unhappiness, concern, and I think we have a lot of work to do in that area. There's a lot of healing that needs to take place, and I think it's going to take a while before the employees in our town have regained their confidence that they're going to be treated the way that they're accustomed to being treated. So I think it's, I think it's a fair point to bring that up and to mention their welfare and their well-being as part of this conversation. That's really all the comments and all the questions I have. I do want to thank you for the opportunity and thank you for being here, Mr. Lester. I really, I, look, we're not going to agree on this, I understand that, we have a difference of opinion on the legal side, the contractual side, the way it was handled, when it was handled. There's a number of things that we're just going to have to agree to disagree on, but in good conscience, I don't think I would be, you know, doing service or justice to myself or to my position without asking the questions and making the comments and coming to some of the conclusions that I have come to. But I do want to thank you for that opportunity, because I know this is a long, a longstanding process, and this has been a very difficult process from many perspectives. In the end, I really do still believe that this contract falls outside the norm of the employer, employee powers that the charter gives the CEO, the first selectman. I do think it falls within the realm, within the conditions of what a contract is, and by definition, I still believe that this agreement, this contract, needs to come before the Board of, needs to come before the Board of Selectmen. I still firmly believe that, and I'd like to make a motion to that effect. That said, I move that the Board of Selectmen review and vote on the CFO separation agreement signed by the first selectman.
Mr. Coman, if I might, I think administratively, you need to make a motion to add it to the agenda before you make the motion to.
Okay. I'm happy to do that. I don't know what item runs, is 17?
It's the last item on the page, but it might be 15.
Yeah, I'll find it. But under item, I think it's item 17 that we're on, 16?
15.
Okay. Under the current item 15, I would like to add to our agenda that the Board of Selectmen review and vote on the agreement that was signed between the CEO and the CFO at our next meeting. I'd like to add that language, do you?
With your permission, my friend.
If that's, if that's a problem.
Why does it just have a couple of words?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, yeah, I'm fumbling with the words.
Just so we go through this administrative, of course, in the background.
Yeah, sure, sure.
One, I think you need to make a motion to add a resolution to the agenda. And I just want to clearly say what that resolution is, so that, and if I might put some words in your mouth.
Sure, sure.
Review and approval to hereafter consider upon resolution to approve the contract, something to that effect. So there's a yes or no sign coming out, that's what voting could be clearly, yeah.
Yes. So add?
So the first thing is to add it to the resolution, then that would be out for just, assuming that passes, which then we have to discussion, and that would be voted on as a resolution under.
That's right. Can you repeat that back to me? Do you have it? I would like to add a resolution that the Board of Selectmen review and vote.
I think you need to say approve, just so there's a yes, because you're voting for.
Approved.
Not, not that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Is that correct? Thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Approved the contract between the town of Fairfield and the former SUV. If that's correct. I'll defer to Stan.
I think that worries me.
Is it? Okay. Yeah.
So that's the, that's the motion before, is to add it to the agenda?
Is to add it to the agenda, yes.
For us, a majority and a two-thirds voted the same thing, so it just needs to.
Correct, so, yeah.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Any discussion with your permission?
Yeah, please keep. Please keep me aligned.
I think the motion, as you stated it, is a proper motion. I just wanted to say that, again, in my view, your vote, quite frankly, would be a nullity. I mean, you know, putting it on the agenda and then vote, you can put it on the agenda, but to vote on it, to vote on whether, whether to approve this contract simply would have no effect because, again, in my opinion, it's beyond the jurisdiction of this board to vote on something like that, so.
And my intent, just so I'm clear, and the motion is clear, or the resolution is clear, is not to vote on it tonight because I would presume that there would need to be additional information or data that we would need to be able to vote on it. So I'm not suggesting that we vote on it tonight. I'm suggesting that we vote on it at our next meeting. That was my original intent. So that was what I was trying to do. I'm not sure if I've done it.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Kelly, you have all the information that's available.
I don't know that that's the case, but.
If there's, if there's anything else you're looking for, the confidentiality piece or nondisparagement piece within the agreement kind of prohibits talking about the issues of what the CFO did or didn't do within that.
That's fair enough, but I'm not asking to vote on it tonight, I'm asking to vote on it at a future meeting, even if I, in your words, have everything I need to have. That's not what I'm asking you to do. I'm asking to vote on it at our next meeting.
Just to clarify procedurally, if I may?
Sure.
Right now, we're having discussion on the motion, essentially.
Right.
Okay. So here's where the practical part of me comes in again, because I actually just heard you, and I seconded your motion because I would like to talk about this. I, one of my questions is, and you did say that you, there would be additional information.
Well.
So how?
I, I hope that maybe there was not, Mr. Petro just remarked to the contrary.
Yeah, I might just to clarify.
Please, yeah.
All the information concerning this agreement is out. The agreement's out, the attachments are out, so it, we talked about this at the Board of Finance, at the briefly prior Board of Selectmen meeting, and we talked about here for a good hour or so.
Okay. I don't dispute any of that. I just don't know what other information might be available to us that we have not yet seen or would be able to review and, you know, understand before we meet next time. So maybe it doesn't need to be added to tonight's agenda, then maybe that's the issue. Because it's my understanding that, you know, we have not been fully briefed on what happened or why it happened and have not had the chance to interact at that level, so.
You've been fully briefed as much as you can be fully briefed.
Well, that's, look, I'm not looking to have that argument here, but what I'm saying is I want to have the, this board has the opportunity to vote on that contract at our next meeting, and any information we can get between now and then, we will certainly So I'm not, I mean, sitting here, if you're sitting here right now and you're telling me there's absolutely nothing else for me to learn or to know or to be informed about, I hear you, but I don't know if that's, I, I don't know if I'm accepting of that. That's what I'm saying. My, my gut tells me there's something else that I need to know or that there's information that we have not received.
And you could describe that, why?
Well, some of it's probably personnel related, right? I don't know. I mean, I don't have the information, so I guess you could describe it to me.
This is actually, and this is, again, why I appreciate the opportunity for a conversation. And earlier in your comments, Selectmen Kylie, you talked about administering the process. And I think, here's part of my struggle. I, I think that there are valid points in this legal opinion. I also think that people have raised some questions, and I have, I read the charter myself as well, and you say, huh, okay, the contract issue, the employment issue, all that. The problem is, what exactly does it mean? You know, when you're talking about administering the process, I assume that, and this is where, this is about this motion, because by, when you say administer the process, what exactly does that mean in terms of, in order to be able to hear, consider, and act upon, or forgive me, I actually don't, the exact words that were, but essentially, our traditional review, approval process. How does that look? How do we do that now, here, given where we are today?
Given where we are right now, this minute, tonight, you can't.
Given where we are, well, walk, walking it through from here to our next meeting. What happens?
What happens?
In your mind, between now and then, since what you talked about earlier, you said something about.
Sure, I'll be glad to answer that question.
Learning is great, but we want to learn in this process.
That's correct.
So, okay, part of, this is part of what I meant.
Sure.
How, how do we, how do we go there?
I'm happy to answer that question. It is my belief that there is additional information that is available to this board as it pertains to this matter. I don't exactly know what that is because it has not been delivered to me. So I do not have all the information, the history, the background, on this decision or this process. So the first step in administering the process is having the information available to you to understand the situation and to value judge the situation. From that point forward, we would need to apply the principles of, okay, what is the proper, what is the proper process for the town to follow? You know, with all the information that we have, do we still agree that this was the right thing to do, or do we not agree that this was the right thing to do? And do we think that this is a contract that the town should support and fund? The process I'm talking about is us looking at the information, having it available, making a decision, making a review, and voting. That's the process. Sure.
As I said before, I think that, again, this is beyond this board's jurisdiction to vote on this contract. And obviously, it's my opinion, you can accept my opinion or not, but if you do accept it, that the board doesn't have jurisdiction over this issue itself, the underlying issue of what happened with the CFO and the first selectman's right to do what he did, if you accept that, then basically you're voting on a nullity. I don't think it's really a good idea for the board to be actually having motions and voting on those things. You can certainly discuss it, which you have, you can express your opinions, which you have, but to have the board voting on something which would have no effect one way or the other, at least in my opinion, now you may disagree, just doesn't seem like it's a great precedent.
I can certainly respect that and understand that, that position, but let me ask you a question back. Let's say you're wrong, or let's say there's an alternative interpretation of the charter, or let's say that there's an interpretation of the charter that would require this board, or at least allow this board, to have a vote on a contract. Whether I believe it or not, doesn't matter, or whether somebody else doesn't believe it, does not matter. Let's say that is the case, hypothetically. What would be the best mechanism to get that review slash vote on a future agenda? So maybe that's the better way to pose the question, because we can disagree on whether it's right or wrong, or whether we should be doing it or not, but under the assumption that we have a right or a role to play, and taking that one step further, that my desire is to exercise that right, review additional information, whatever is available or made available to us, and have that review and that vote at a future meeting, what would be the proper thing to do here tonight, from a resolution or from an amendment-wise, so that we don't get in the weeds on that? Because I don't want to get in the weeds on how to word a resolution or how to add something to an agenda, if you can better answer that question.
You've essentially made what's a motion to suspend the rules, to add something to the agenda, which requires a two-thirds vote under Roberts. That's what you've done. That is, that is a proper method to do it.
Right.
And so it will require a two-thirds vote to do that, and getting it on the agenda, that's fine. Again, you know, you've asked me a hypothetical question, which I don't think applies here because, again, I don't think this board has jurisdiction, but from what you've done, I believe is, under Roberts' rules of order, proper. You just have to have a two-thirds vote to do it.
But to add, to add to this, to add what to the agenda? That's my question. I don't want to add to the agenda to vote on this tonight because I still feel not fully informed to make that vote. So under the assumption that we've already voted to add this to the agenda book, what I want to add to the agenda is our right to come back and discuss this and vote on this at our next meeting.
I think that.
That's what I want to do.
Okay, I think if you.
So maybe I've done it backwards.
Well, one of the reasons, one of the ways you might do it, I'm just thinking out loud here, is if it, if it gets passed tonight and it's put on the agenda tonight, you can move to table it to the next meeting. You could do something like that, but again, you have to have, at least at this point, you'd have to have a two-thirds vote to add it now. That's, off the top of my head, one way you could probably do it, to get it on the next, the next agenda, but you, you put it on tonight.
So that would work. So we've already added it to the agenda, so if.
No, we haven't.
We haven't?
We're discussing.
Right, there's been a motion, Nick.
Right, there's been a motion, okay. Okay, so I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you. Quite simply, my concerns are, as much as we've talked about the settlement agreement, talked about authority, and I can certainly understand the questions, and that's why I consulted with legal coun, independent legal counsel, as well as town attorney, to make sure we're doing it in the proper way. As soon as that discussion, as you started to move it to, let's evaluate what's taken place, that's clearly moving into the jurisdiction of the first selectman. There's absolutely no question about that in terms of the charter, that the CFO reports to the first selectman and is responsible to the first selectman for the performance of his duties, and that very specifically, that performance review, that performance evaluation is done by the first selectman. Second, with the nondisparagement confidentiality clause within the contract, I'm bound by that independently to not disclose any information beyond that, so the areas that you're looking for, you already have, and as much as have everything beyond it, everything other than what's covered by that clause, we've been totally open and transparent on, we've made all that information available, we disclosed it immediately after the document was signed. So I'm concerned about where we're going with this and getting far beyond the scope of what the Board of Selectmen is even close to do within, within anybody's interpretation of the charter.
Okay.
As I said in my remarks last time, I, there are two pieces here, and one of which is the first selectman's role in personnel matters with the chief fiscal officer. And people may disagree. My personal understanding of that is that the actual appointing authority is clear, and with the exception of certain cases, that, that management, the things that the first selectman just said related to that. I think the piece that people are struggling with is the issue with respect to contract, no contract, related to, you know, Attorney Lester spoke to this before. He, I think what you said was, we don't even get that far. So again, you know, I don't mean to beat the practical horse, but I think, Selectman Kylie, my, my question is, given that what we're hearing pretty clearly is the personnel pieces are off limits to us in terms of consideration of the contracts. The town attorney is also saying that he believes this isn't within our purview, and the first selectman's repeating it, so, again, just from a practical standpoint, I think I'm hearing pretty clearly from the first selectman that we're not going to get additional information related to some of those things, which, Selectman Kylie, I think, you know, it's fair for you to say that in order to be able to, to fully look at it, you would want to look at those things. So this is the difficulty of this situation. Is it, may, for you, may I ask, Selectman Kylie?
Sure.
Just question is, if you're not getting, if you or I, the two of us are not going to be given access or have that additional information, do you still want to go forward with the motion?
Yes, I do. Because at the moment, I still do not know if all the information has been conveyed to this board, with all due respect. And I think there needs to be made a request for that information sometime between now and our next meeting, whether it's a personnel request, a Board of Selectmen request, or an FOY request, so that whatever information is available, that is not in violation of a contract, whether you agree with the contract or not, is made available to us. And until I'm convinced that that information is in front of me, then I would not be prepared to say I have all the information I need to evaluate and vote. So I would answer yes.
Yeah, I, clearly, I think we have, there are some differences of opinion at this I guess a question for the town attorney. The motion is, is a valid motion, as you've said. Is there anything improper enough? I understand that you say that a vote would be.
A motion, motion before is to add something to the.
Correct, and that's a proper motion.
Right. If the, if this motion were voted on and this were to go on the agenda of the next meeting.
Well, it would go on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
I think that would be the best way. But again, as I said, you're voting on something that, you know, if, it's just, I don't want to say it's a waste of time, it's not a waste of time, but it's a nullity. It's just, in my opinion, it's simply you're going to take a vote on something, I don't, I don't think a board has ever done that, take a vote on something which is really beyond their jurisdiction and it just has no effect on anything. I just don't see the point, quite frankly. So, I'm just a lawyer.
I think, if I'm, thanks. If I'm hearing you correctly, and if that's all true, and if a member of this board understood and believed all of that, right, that there's nothing else to learn, or that we don't have a role or a right to play, then they would vote no to adding it to the agenda, and that vote would speak to that.
I mean, a person could vote no for many reasons. So I, that, that might be one of them, but I think it also could be that they agree with what I say, that there's, it's just kind of, there's no point in doing it.
That, that was part of my comment.
Yeah, and, I mean, as far as getting the information, you know, you're a selectman, you ask the first selectman, and I think whatever he can provide you, he's going to provide you, he's going to provide that to anybody. So I don't see the point, if that's, if that's really the only reason that you're doing this, I think there are other ways to get the information you want. But again, as I said, I'm just a lawyer.
Okay. I'm, I'm, we've been on this long enough, and thank you for your patience and your consideration. I really do appreciate that. I'm prepared to vote.
One more, if I may, one more question. Selectman Kylie, just in terms of trying to understand, is the information that you're seeking, the personnel information?
It could very well be part of it. I don't know all the other information that might be available, but I'm, I'm going to assume that that would be inclusive of the information that might be available.
And is there, and just?
I have to assume that, because I just don't know.
Okay, and this is a valid, I literally am asking this as a valid question. Is there other specific information that you have in mind right now that you're seeking or?
At the moment, on an item-item basis, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a discussion point that I'm prepared to have, but I'm, my general comment is, whatever, all and any information that is available to us legally should be made available to us. I can't state and list what all those items are, because I just simply don't know. Once again, I hate to keep going back to that, but it happens to be the case. So I would, I would assume it includes that kind of. assume it includes that kind of stuff, and who knows? Correspondence, I just don't know. So until I know, then I don't know.
Comments? I think here's my struggle, is I understand positions on both sides of this issue, frankly. I am-- I have agonized over this issue for many weeks. I think that the first-- what the first selectman said about trying to follow the proper process, trying to look at what are the rules, what does it say, seeking the support of someone outside of the town who clearly this is his area of practice and expertise, and going through that process in the best possible way, as he saw to follow that. That makes sense to me. I also know that the first selectman has, many times at this board, taken steps to help make each of us feel comfortable in being able to make a decision. I know that this is clearly different than that because in those cases, he agrees that it is within our jurisdiction. You know, at this point, it's-- though I happen to agree, based on my previous comments, that for this particular contract, an agreement that was entered into, as I said earlier, I do believe that it's an agreement that is enforceable, though I'm not an attorney. I understand the conflict in terms of the question, so...
I can appreciate that. Thank you.
I find myself in a difficult position, but I believe, at this point, that I'm reluctantly, but understanding, the position that Selectman Kylie has stated, going to support the motion to put it on the agenda.
Any further comments? Any comments in the public? Any none, back and forth? My concern with this is that, A, I do agree with the first elect-- with the town attorney about the first selectman's authority, and that's why we went through as much of this process as we did to get to this point, to make sure that we were following the charter, following legal precedent, following past practice. And we try to be as open as we can about the settlement agreements, the attachments, the documents that the department had benefits sheet, all of that, to help people see everything that transpired. The only thing that we haven't been able to be open about is, or I haven't been able to be open about is the-- that are covered by the non-disparagement agreement or the confidentiality agreement. And as long as we're looking at the settlement agreement, you know, as much as I don't agree with it, I can see where the confusion is and appreciate, if you will, the other side of the argument. As soon as it starts moving to the personnel side, there's just no basis for that. And there isn't a basis for that in the charter. There isn't a basis for that anywhere else. The charter is about as clear as it can be in terms of the responsibilities of the first selectman with respect to the CFO and certain other positions, but very definitely the CFO. So, and again, I-- no question that it will be a long time before I sign another confidentiality agreement like this and put myself in a position like this, because it certainly lends to the conspiracy theory that there's something else to know. And you can't answer that without getting into things. And certainly, to some degree, there are more things to know, but it's just, I-- if it's going to have this kind of trauma on our board, as well as elsewhere, you know, I can't imagine a case where I'd go ahead and sign one of those again. So that's definitely one of the steps in this process. Though, done with the best of intentions and with legal advice, and certainly to agree to protect both sides, I'm just not excited about that.
It is until we postpone--
Well, it's not-- nothing's happened yet. We haven't voted on it.
That's true. I'm sorry. You are correct.
We haven't-- yeah, we haven't voted on it.
Yeah, right. That's true.
So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm just-- while I can see, certainly, the questions on whether this agreement is a contract and whether it's something come before this board, the personnel matters don't in any way initiate itself. So are we ready to vote?
Yeah, and I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the situation, and I thank you.
Can we have the motion read back, just to be cleared up?
Actually, the simplest way to say it is a yes vote puts it on the offender.
Yes, that's correct.
The settlement agreement.
Settlement agreement.
Go ahead. Stand and read that.
Stan, didn't you take the approved part out, just review? Did you recommend that sentence language?
No, you need-- I think that we need the approved part in and make it a yes or no kind of thing.
Got it. Okay. Or leave the review out and have this approved. Okay, it's fine the way it is. I'm sorry. Okay.
May I offer-- can we actually use the words that are on the general release and settlement agreement?
If you want to substitute that language, that's--
Would that be a friendly amendment or a--
It is.
Either way, you have to make the motion.
Okay. I move to put in the language, general release and settlement agreement.
And it would need to be seconded?
Seconded.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? All right. Now, the motion has amended to add this to the agenda. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. It is now on our agenda.
At this point, we've had plenty of discussion on this. At this point, I move to postpone the item that we just added to tonight's agenda to a date certain. That date certain being our October 3 meeting, 2012. And quickly, my rationale for that is the previous conversations. You know, if there is other information available to us, we obviously don't have it now or before us, so therefore, we could only vote with what we know to date. Whether that's absolutely inclusive of everything or not, I don't know sitting here, but I do need to find out if it is. Therefore, I would respectfully request that we postpone this to our next meeting, October 3, without further discussion.
One second.
There are two different issues there. You can request a postponement, but I don't think you can combine that with a motion to cut off the debate.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was-- I overtracked it. I didn't mean to cut off the debate. I just meant postponement.
Is there-- you've made a motion to postpone.
To a date certain, October 3, period.
Is there a second?
Yes. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I wasn't--
Yes, there is a second. I will second that.
Any further discussion? Any comments in the public? Back to the body. One more time. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor? Opposed? Are we done? I believe that was the-- next item on the agenda was to hear, consider an act upon any communication. Having none, hear, consider an act upon any other business that should probably come before this meeting. None. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We're done for tonight?
We are. Thank you.